This is the Harwich Planning Board meeting of the ninth of July, 2024, here in the Town Hall in Harwich. This evening, we are waiting on one member of the board, Alan Peterson, to sign up. And so before we go into our business, let me just make a couple of quick housekeeping announcements. First of all, according to Mass General Law, anybody who intends to recording must first notify the Chair. Is there anybody here that intends to record? No. So I would also like to invite you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we also have one member who is going to be late, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, so Mary is going to be here as soon as she can get here. So with that in mind, if it's okay with the applicants in the public hearings, I'd like to go to the public meeting section first so that we can have a full complement. We don't have to delay. So I would like to open with case PB 2022-15, 575 Route 28, the request for permit extension. Please have a seat. Yep. Good, how's it going?
Good, thank you. So I'm Dennis Miller. I own Main Street HPLLC, which is the owner of 575 Route 28, 571 and 569, all of which are part of the development. Development was approved by this board in August of 2022. Had all good intentions. We had set up to go into construction. Financial situation changed. The anchor tenant, which was the Mad Minnow Restaurant at the time, it was no secret, decided they could not go forward, in which case my bank decided I could not go forward. And so it kind of set me back. And over the last 18 months, I've been working steadily, slowly but surely, trying to get someone. And I am on the verge of having a new anchor restaurant to come in. Same footprint, same, you know, same square footage. And I'm just asking for an extension because I am not likely to be able to get into construction until... I wouldn't anyway in the center personally because of all the activity already there before Labor Day, but I'm likely not to be able to get under construction until October, maybe November. So, which would be past the expiration date. So I'm requesting a 12-month extension, if you would see it that way.
Very good. Any comments from the town?
Nope.
Any questions from the board, please?
Thank you for this, Dennis. Just because we had the discussion in open meeting the last time about the easement and the two curb cuts, you now, your neighbor has changed, your adjacent neighbor. And we talked about, a lot about trucks getting into the back of this property and whatever else. Is it possible to look at that easement issue again?
I have had the discussion when Jeff acquired the property. I know him, you know, we have a good relationship. And he wanted to get his work being, which is underway right now. He wanted to get that approved, get it done. And then he said, I am open to talking about opening, literally opening up and potentially going to the town, saying, we want to combine the parking lots. And he gets the benefit, you know, during his business hours more so than the restaurant. But we have not certainly formalized anything yet, or I'm not even sure that we will, but I am wide open to that discussion. I'm about as flexible as anyone you'll find.
Well, and when Jeff came here, he was open to it as well.
Yes.
And it was about, it's kind of that jamming in the back and ease for trucks to service these new developments. And having been downtown in Harwich Port during July 4th, anything we could do to, for a new development to have some more flexibility, looks like we could use it going forward.
No, and I fully expect my parking lot there, as is the parking lot I have at the Mad Minnow Three Monkeys, really becomes a town parking lot. I mean, I know that and I'm fine with that. I mean, it's a village and my, even though I know I'm technically outside the realm of being able to utilize, get credited for the municipal lot, I consider village just that. We share parking lots. There's plenty of places with no parking that are packed with people. And I know they're parking somewhere and I know it's my lots they're parking in. So totally fine with that. Jeff and I have had a lot of conversations about all of this. So until I had a firm plan and timing and until he got his approved and knew it was going forward, we just said, okay, let's just keep open-minded about it. And at the time, we'll talk, it's an easy connection.
Right.
Absolutely.
Landscaping.
We don't want to miss this opportunity for the access to Bank Street in a different circle.
Right. No, I am 100% on board. I think we both would gain as well as I think the town would gain.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Just, I know you referenced that, that kind of larger restaurant is the same footprint. Is the intent that you'd still have the coffee shops? So there'd be kind of the differing now?
It is, although I don't have the coffee shop. I had the coffee shop pinned down. They went to Orleans. So I no longer have a coffee shop pinned down. But, you know, I always have, there's a fluid amount of communication to me. Retailers and coffee shops and lunch and places and all, you know, talking to me. I just don't have those conversations. I can't really have them until I get the restaurant down and then I'm... But the intention is yes, to still have that. We had a, if you recall, and you probably do, it had to be closed, I believe it was four o'clock every day, other than Music and the Port Nights and all that. So, and that's still the spirit in which I'm going forward. Hopefully, that will happen, yes.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? We don't have a hearing to close, so I think we just need to have a motion to extend. I'd like to entertain if we could.
So moved?
Is that okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Great.
Attention granted. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much, everyone, thank you.
Thanks for being open.
Look forward to keeping you updated as well.
Yep, well, look forward to seeing progress down there this winter.
Right.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So I think we're going to continue with the town planners update, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, just again, I apologize, but we have two people that I don't want to have it go any further than tonight, right? So has anybody TM'd Alan, by the way?
No, if you could, I was going to email him.
All right, I'm going to see if I can get a TM. If you don't mind, we'll take care of that first.
So as part of the local comprehensive plan update, on July 30th, Karen Sonnenberg, who is doing the housing production plan under, who was contracted by Ty and Bond, will be making a formal presentation of the housing production plan on July 30th at 6:00 PM at the, in the multipurpose room of the community center. The meeting is being sponsored or hosted by the select board, and it would be really great to have planning board members because, as you know, the housing production plan will be submitted to the state and it will need a sign-off and endorsement of the planning board as well as the select board. So it would be great to have as many planning board members there as possible. I will also be sure to post a meeting as well, just in case if there are more than three people.
So this is July 30th at what time?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
Where did you say? I'm putting it in my camera as you speak.
The community center in the multipurpose room at 6:00 PM. It should be about an hour, hour and a half.
Will it be livestreamed or?
I'm talking with IT to try and have it livestreamed, but I'm not positive. We will try to have it recorded as, if it's not livestreamed, to at least have it recorded at a minimum.
Right.
Yeah.
Great.
So the open space and recreation plan, the survey closed last week. We had over 440 participants in the survey. So the consultants are putting together all of that information and we are moving forward with the open space and recreation plan, housing, open space and recreation plan goals and strategies as part of the plan. And the committee did hold a information session back in June and it wasn't well-attended, but the information and the discussion, I thought, was really great with the participants who did come. So in the hazard mitigation plan, we are moving along with that. We've had several meetings so far and we are looking to also do a survey as well as community outreach. So I will be providing updates relative to that plan as well. So we're moving along. And for the local comprehensive plan, we are in the process of working with the consultants to do draft strategies and goals for each section. And there are about eight sections to the plan. And we hope to do outreach to all town boards and committees starting in September for feedback and to make sure that we've covered all the bases and are trying to do as much outreach and get as much feedback from those boards and committees as possible.
And would you also like to discuss the stamped map, rezoning map? Because I think that was, been an ongoing topic of conversation and that I think that everybody ought to know about.
Yes, as we've discussed previously, the zoning map is, we will, we are working with VHB to update the zoning map in some of the districts as well as making sure that the references in the zoning bylaw are in tandem with the actual zoning map. So we just need to update that and have that stamped in. And hopefully, we'll have that on the, prepared for next town meeting in May.
Great.
Yep.
Which is going to close a lot of loops that we don't know about and open up probably some questions that we don't know about either.
So it's just really housekeeping. Particularly with this 481 Depot Street, there were some anomalies that were identified. So we just want to do some updates and some housekeeping, so.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any other further updates.
Okay. While we are still waiting for Alan, Alan did not get back to me. Is he coaching tonight? Does anybody know? He said he was going to be online though, right?
Correct.
I got the email, so.
Yep. Do we want to take a 15-minute recess?
Let's do that. Let's recess until seven o'clock. I have 6:43, is that okay? All right. Better take a little time now than more time later. So we'll, we stand in recess. I don't have a gavel or anything, so 16 minutes, okay? Thanks.
I'll be right back.
See if we, he's got an ETA.
Because we're not a quarter.
Well, yeah, we're not, we need five for the hearing, so.
Need to recruit some friends for playing.
Let's work on our track for that.
I'll put some bullets together. We can refine them together.
Because it's like, highlight?
Q and A.
Highlight, how, what's the commitment? Yeah, what's the commitment? How do we spin this one?
It's fine. No, we're never late, no.
I don't think I knew that it was every other week.
I'm, I think I'm finally feeling useful. Oh, me too.
Like you, you were like, oh.
We have a chance to get the easement, which we never had before.
Well, the other thing too is it takes so long to kind of see what a cycle is, right? When you go through, it goes through the pipeline, it's very, you know, every, there are so many different variables in an output. And then when you finally see something gets put up, erected, different occupancy, it's like it's...
Like that one over in Depot, the one near Bell's Neck, that old...
Yeah, I keep watching that.
I keep driving by it and I'm like, I started.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep watching that and the 36 apartments over here, keep watching that. So that we don't have the old history with, you know, Heathers and stuff. It's like, I mean, Harwich Port was insane. My daughter said, remember when people used to just zip through Harwich Port to get to Chatham? I said, I actually do.
And just spread it out, like a bit more down the, it'd be so nice.
We have, I was trying to count the restaurants. We have some ridiculous amount of restaurants. We're like restaurant row, people come from Chatham, go to Harwich Port, which is ew.
Well, it's spreading out. My daughter and her husband opened a restaurant in Dennisport.
Really?
They're doing that, it's a loon, I don't know if you've seen it, it's right, that's...
Where are they?
You went there?
No, I want to and I was going to...
I have to say, it's really good.
Oh, that's so good.
Like reading all the, we never get out, but I was like, I would like coordinate all the humans to be able to go there.
Where is it?
It's right on 28, you know, kind of catty-cornered Barbo's.
Oh, yeah.
There's that...
It used to, they used to do like a cake...
Cake and Islands.
It was the cake and island place. How good for them.
That's where I bought my first car, like, back in the upper Jurassic.
Did they get two seatings or three seatings?
Two seatings, and each one is like two hours. So, but they also, on Wednesday and Sunday, they've got this like bistro menu, so you can, it's à la carte.
Oh, cool.
You can go in. I know, they have, all of their open table reviews are five stars. So they've got ranked...
I was reading them all, they're...
They've got ranked at the top of the Boston scene.
Have they done this before?
Yeah, this is their second, this is their second season. They did a pop-up in a restaurant was across from the old, from where Cuffy's is, you know, in West Dennis. It was Clean Slate Eatery, they were running it there and they just, it had a, it was just, they crushed it, so.
They have a background in this or?
Yeah, I mean, they've both been in this, but, so they're both like 28. And between the two of them, they've got like 35 years of hospitality experience. And Charlotte, my daughter, is a, like one of the big producers in this company called Toast.
Yes.
Which is the credit card and software, hardware thing for restaurants. So she's like a regional, like hotshot for the, for sales. So they both, and you know, they were out for five years during COVID in Portland, Oregon, and they worked their way around all these restaurants. And Charlotte figured out this way to crack the code on the findings in front of the house. And she's figured it out and she's doing a good job, so.
Help, do they have enough help?
Yeah, and they've got, they've got, they figured out that. They, we weren't, their first time there was at a soft opening and they realized that night that they need a full-time dishwasher. Because between every course, it's eight courses, everything gets moved off and has to get washed and then get laid down again. It's not the same stuff, but it's just like, that's a lot.
All of my sons were dishwasher people. And I remember the chef comping us dinner because he said, there's no more more valuable because your kids show up.
Yeah, that's right. I was, I was the first dishwasher at the Friendly's in West Harwich in 1972, when it opened up. Like, you know, the one that's now Blackbeard's. That was one of our...
I remember that Friendly's.
When they came through here, I was, I'm like, yeah, I know that place, but...
My daughter can still tell you what's in a conehead, you know, Sunday. Oh, that's so good, that's so good.
So they're filling out, so Dennisport is filling out with interesting stuff too, I think.
It just needs a couple and...
Right, that Holy Cow, which is, attracts people from like Hyannis to go there for ice cream. Have you been there? The ice cream spot? They've got...
Well, they have Captain Parker's Donuts farther down.
Do you know, K.O. pizzas just come back? They reopen.
Yeah, K.O., yeah.
They're trying to redo that.
Right.
Got to get rid of some of the junky shops and bring in like more of the...
What's the anchor, there's the coffee shop?
The Red Nun and the Ruffies. Den, Den seems to do pretty well.
Den does pretty well.
Okay.
But you gotta go, you ought to try Holy Cow.
Okay.
Because they've got the craziest flavors.
I drive through a lot, but never like stop and see all these places.
You have to part around back. That's the secret.
Well, this is great, that's so wonderful that you've got...
Well, go give it a try. Don't, don't just, oh, so here's the thing.
It'll take forever to get...
Now, now this is a good push because I was going to do it and then I was like, oh, God.
So this is very cool. So she had, she was telling me they had a, on like a Thursday or Wednesday, or no, it was Tuesday, before they opened, they had a whole like afternoon set aside for Ness and did a, like a five-minute segment on it.
Oh, yeah.
And so they're like, this is fantastic. And so on that Saturday, somebody, you know, Sunday came in, three people sat at the bar. And it was a woman that owns 50, a chain of 50 restaurants and who started by bringing Joelle Robuchon to Las Vegas in like the 80s or 90s, whatever. And she's like taking pictures and livestreaming on Instagram from Joelle's restaurant. It's like, you know, that's how you get, that's like, a rock star gets discovered.
How big are they? How many seats?
It's like 18 seats or 16 seats, it's very small. But it's, it's, it's good, it's worth going. There's nothing else like it.
No.
So, and so his, you know, his dad was a chef and was involved in a great restaurant in New York called Belgo. I don't know if that rings a bell, but like in the 90s, it was this huge, kind of after the French, like, you know, takeover in the 80s and there was this Belgian Renaissance in the 90s. And Belgo was like the epicenter of it. And he was the guy who was running it, you know, it was a great, fantastic spot. And then when they were, when they got engaged, like a couple, three years ago, we were both work, so he was doing professional menus. He was working for Wendy's and I was doing the experience design at Wendy's Drive-Thru. And we both had the same class, like, hmm, so maybe there is a little chemistry here going on, you know, it's like, so.
Wendy's was my favorite when I worked at Cargill Company, you know, because we had them all to work with. They were like, they were pushing that food, but not just pushing that food, like...
Right. I can't, I can't, I can't get into any of it anymore. I just, I go to the knack and that's about it.
Yeah, well, well, then they had to, the operations part of it got crazy in the back for McDonald's and everything else in terms of production. I think McDonald's is still Cargill's biggest, its biggest customer.
I'm sure.
And when they went to breakfast all day, Cargill does all the egg stuff. So learned, you know, learned way too much of it. It's like, and then you take that information, you're like, can I drop it out somewhere?
Right. I had McDonald's as a client for a project that they wanted to harmonize their color palette in 17 countries. And, you know, I realized when I got into the room, after I got my deposit, that I was basically the host in the center of a circular firing squad. They, all the different business units wanted to take down this idea and I was just the guy who got...
Yeah, yeah.
Strung out to take the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune.
We've been in those spots.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's interesting. One of the classes I taught in April, and I've taught it before, is I teach the Starbucks case about their cup and why they can't change it because of what contracts they sign and everything else. But I always teach the, how much money, how much money they make off of Frappuccinos. They really sell very little coffee.
Right.
And they sell, and I did the whole Frappuccino thing and I, and they said, that's six bucks. And I said, and the main ingredient is ice.
Right.
Well, that's, I worked on the Dunkin' business.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I remember, like, that was when Starbucks was coming into this market and Tim Hortons was coming down from Canada and it was like this crazy. And I was, that was my first job, so I was super junior. But I was on the team that came up with the America runs on Dunkin' campaign and then launched it.
Welcome.
20 years in market, think about like brand, it's just, and, I mean...
So were you at Dunkin' or were you at an agency?
I was at Hill Holiday.
Oh, wow, oh, cool.
And it was really cool because learned about, like, they were freaking out about Starbucks. But it's a whole, it's a completely different consumer.
Different consumer.
And a different use case. Like people might go to both, but it's like different mindset.
And on the ingredient side, it's all, it's the, it's basically the sugar content makes the slushy, right? So how, and it's the, how do you get the slushy to a certain consistency and how do you... It is, because it will not slush unless you have a high...
It's very, and I, Dunkin', we did a lot with the headquarters, the innovation and how they...
Yeah, I've worked with the chat, yeah.
How do you mass produce this and how is it working and how do you standardize it across all the franchisees? Because that's a very vocal community.
Corum and just work.
Megan worked with Dunkin' business forever too. She, one of her first jobs, she would have to wear the cup costume. Because, you know, it's, and it was only who could see out the eyes. It wasn't that they wanted her.
She's a perfect type.
She's a perfect type. And then she worked with the other mascots, the Patriot mascot and somebody else. And she said, the Patriot mascot guy is crazy.
You have to be crazy to wear those things.
Well, and she said when she was, because she was doing PR and they were like, we don't have anybody for the cup. She had to be the cup. She would call him by his real name and he would freak out. Yeah, it was great. Oh, my God, we have all these shared stuff.
We worked a lot with the Patriots.
It's not gotten back to me and I just checked my email for Mary.
And Dunkin' had a whole sports marketing.
Oh, yeah.
Because they did do a ton.
We'll have to talk about their, their Ben Askew moment.
Okay.
At your numbers.
Okay.
Actually, I have a friend who's head of, I'm going to reach out to her.
It's like, what did they pay and what'd they get? I always like that.
But she's the head of marketing and brand, well, one of that, not the CML, but like the VPO of brand over there now. She's more of a product marketer person, but anyway, need to be checking that. I just booked my reservation for my anniversary.
At Loon?
Yep. Saturday, September 14th at 7:30.
Congrats, enjoy.
We get lots of other things done besides planning. We've got restaurants and...
I have, I have, open tables, right there.
There you go.
I'll send it to my husband now.
I remember telling my kids about the whole Starbucks thing and they were like, their jaw dropped and they were like, unpaid six month bucks pretty much for a dairy slurpee? And I was like, yeah, pretty much.
Yes.
And they buy so little coffee, the biggest, um...
Their coffee isn't as good, like Dunkin's coffee is actually better, like from a quality perspective.
They don't care about it anymore.
Right.
They don't make money.
Right.
Their biggest ingredient spend is dairy.
Why that?
Oh, you know what's just opened is the Chobani job, one of the Chobani jobs. And I worked with Hamdi. That's a great company. They just bought somebody.
Yeah, I haven't been looking at food at the time, but I should go back. I like food. I like B to C and I like food. I'm okay too.
Food's tangible. And you can do stuff and you're not usually, unless you have to go through a recall, it's not too bad.
Until you hit the health claims, then you get like...
Well, that's the sugar, that seems to have, that seems to have calmed down a bit. Yeah, I went through the sugar, I went through corn syrup.
Yeah.
Talk about demonizing the wrong ingredient. I mean, it's like, it's crazy. It's cheap, that's why they use it. And then, and all the sweetener, I know all the sweeteners in every Coke formula is shit. Fountains different than canned.
Mm-hmm. It's fun, it's interesting.
Yeah, Chobani, I just saw it, it must have been on LinkedIn.
I know somebody who worked there.
I knew that I do the CMO, I wonder if it's the same, let's look him up. He was on the agency side. I met Hamdi when he had just had New York.
Well...
He's about this tall.
Yeah, I'd give him...
He is amazing.
If they're, if they're willing to wait. If they're willing, you know.
Okay.
Can we just say?
We'll extend the recess.
Yeah, right.
Are we going to have anybody? Food. The other one is alcohol.
That's okay with extending the recess.
Yeah.
One of the two people that were waiting, let us want to continue.
Do you have just?
No, I'll do it. I mean, I've used ahead. I've seen enough.
Megan's in trouble, the absolute one right now.
The absolute one, yeah. We did, we were...
So we have an open, are we allowed to do this or do we have to give a time?
I think you have to give a time.
Okay.
Do 7:15 and then we can always extend it.
We'll listen to 7:15 and then to 7:30. At 7:30, we'll reevaluate the evening, but we'll go 15 more minutes, 14 more minutes, 15 more minutes. Okay. So how long were you with Hill Holiday? I always wanted to work with them.
For, just for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And then I went to Ocean Spray.
Their great first job.
Their great first job. They were like, kind of put you through the ringer.
Yeah.
I think I told you this. I was at Hill and they do like the, the four A's does, uh, like a case study type thing. And they, you're like selected to be a rising star and participate. My, our case study was Ocean Spray. And at the same time, so I got all the background. And then at the same time, I had a friend who was a recruiter and she's like, oh, I have this Ocean Spray job. I was like, oh, that's funny because I just learned all about it. And my team won the case. So we went to present the case at Ocean Spray and then I interviewed right after it.
Oh, it's the best thing.
That's legal.
I was like, this is amazing.
I used to recruit for my agencies all the time, all the time.
Yeah. Hill Holiday, it was when we were, I was on forty-two in the Hancock Tower. It was so fun.
Oh, that's right.
It was, I mean, it was wild. Like, not as wild as it was back in the day, but like, it was wild.
They had a golf setup at each corner. Did they, did they feel at it?
And we had Gump who used to drive, this man, he used to have a minivan and he'd drive us everywhere because we were always taking, we did for Dunkin', like all the signage, every single, like the trucks. So we were constantly bringing proofs back and forth. So you'd ride with Gump everywhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Gump also, I'd go with him to get a keg of beer and we'd take it up the freight elevator and bring it into the conference room. It was fun. Not sustainable. I don't know how people.
No, it wasn't.
Do that forever.
No, because they burn you out. You have, you a couple of years and you're done.
Mm-hmm.
And you have to go on the other side. Oh, my God. All the ingredient stuff just keeps coming back. Well, I explained the whole thing about the, um, you know, there are only two cup producers in the, kind of in the world now. So Cargill, oh, I'm sorry, Starbucks always signs, they all sign a contract. It's about three to four years. So everyone goes, you throw away four billion cups, they can't change it because they sign these contracts.
Yes, yeah. It's years and years of that.
And they can't, and they, it's, it's the supply chain running the business is really what it is.
Well, and, and like with Ocean Spray, the plants are set up, you pump through whatever size. Like Ocean Spray, you wouldn't think of them as an innovator, but like the sixty-four ounce square, they all used to be round.
And they went square.
Right.
Because it's more efficient.
Right.
And then like we used to bottle.
They go through the bottom line better, yeah.
We did all, we had a strategic.
They hit each other.
Nestle, because we, like, started Tetra Packs, you know, like little juice boxes. Like Ocean Spray started those. And then we used to bottle all juicy juice, like all of them.
Oh, so you did, um, contract filling.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, yeah.
And with that, we negotiated, we bought all of our media under the Nestle umbrella. So we got their rates.
Ooh.
And I managed all that too. Like, it was, I mean, crazy. We never could have, because our budgets were like forty million dollars for TV, which is like nothing. But we got them at Nestle who spent, you know.
Yeah, we always, we, we wrote, well, we called Coke or Pepsi's contract. And they were, because, um, we, um. We did bets on, everybody had a position agriculturally on one thing or the other. So you were managing that and there was trading on other things. I don't know if we can do it anymore that way. Um, but filling, when Chobani was doing their second plant, we were working with Hamdi in it because dairy is so difficult. Like, um, Yoplait never thought anyone would come after him because it's such an expensive refrigerator aisle.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like stable, like the stability of it must be unbelievable.
High loss, I would think too. Margins gotta be pretty tight.
But, um, he reformulated, he, he brought, you know, a new recipe and doubled the protein. He hit, he hit a, a sweet spot in the market. But boy, did he go for a big bet. And his first bet was where his plant was, was in upstate New York.
Yeah.
So his first bet had to be metropolitan New York, which, and he did it. And the guy who's CMO, his name's Peter or something, he may be Chobani's CEO, Peter may be Mafly, M-A-F-L-Y.
Let's look at, there is a brand well, there's a senior director of brand, but I'm trying to figure out if it's out anywhere.
I don't know what that one is. So, so he told us kind of all how he did it and it's logistics, refrigerated jugs. And Yoplait had their guard down because they didn't think anyone would come after him. And they just kept losing share, losing share. Then his second plant, he had to be in, I think he did Idaho because of the distribution route, dairy and the dairy supply. Right? You had to have a certain amount of milk product coming through and everything. He was.
Oh, yeah. What, what the radius?
It's not, it's like, I would say it's a hundred miles. It was like Idaho was picked. Because I think California, I mean, it was like, you know, where is the biggest one? But it was fascinating to just kind of.
That's gotta be so expensive to truck.
So expensive. So.
Like refrigerated, that, oh.
Yeah, but then he raised the price point on yogurt.
Yes. We used, we like even.
Yeah.
When you look at it even in beverage, like, oh, wow, like you can do this.
You can do that. And Yoplait had cheapened.
Mm-hmm. Exactly. Like, how do you create that, like good, better best and like kind of here?
And then fast, how do you pay for it?
Mm-hmm.
Right? So Yoplait, by that time, had messed around with the flavor formulas so much, everything tasted like candy. Because they were also cheapening it. So the next brand manager threw, I can't do anything. I can't change the packaging. I'll do a flavor and I'll cheapen the product. And Cargill saw it all happening. And then you see, you know. And you're everybody's supplier, so you have to speak in big general terms about shifts in the marketplace and nobody believes you.
Sorry, there's nothing that, having done some work for, um, John Rolfo, you know, the, um, the one where Minneapolis is, I can't even remember.
Yeah, there you are.
Watching them push through the heart healthy thing, like this was like ten years ago, when you know that there wasn't one ingredient that changed. There wasn't anything in the supply chain. There's not anything, the only thing that changed were the violators and the foxes and the law determining what qualified as heart healthy. I'm like, you know what? This part of the business I just can't do. The lawyers are.
The packaging part, it used to kill me because they'd narrow the box.
Right.
You know? And then was it slip fill when they don't quite fill it?
Yeah.
Because it's all, it's all Bosch equipment. It's all these food safety Bosch equipment that you can, it's German engineering. You can bring it down to, you know, take out four, two year olds kind of.
Right.
And you save X.
Right.
And like, yeah, that part's tough.
Cranberry sauce when it went to TP scan instead of the three P scan. Do you remember when cranberry sauce used to like do one end and one end if you were?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Then they went to, and then, I mean, it's hard to get that thing out of there and you have to like, her bobble is big to do, but so much cheaper, so much cheaper.
It's the, yeah, and then, um, because a friend of mine worked on it. General Mills missed the squeeze, the kid's squeeze.
Right.
Um, they had it before anybody. It was like Tetra Pack or somebody came to them and they were like, oh, it won't work.
No one wanted that.
And then, um, I, my friend lost her mind over it because she had little kids and she was like, oh.
Oh, it's, it's so not sustainable, but it's brilliant. It's so much easier. They can actually do it themselves. I mean, even now.
Yep.
You know, those little yogurt tubes and like the applesauce, they make a mess. Like with those, you can be.
I don't even want to think about the microplastics and all the, the whole side effect of, oh my God.
No, it's a.
And the other thing is like, and the, and the other thing that you were talking about was the kind of driving, the production chain driving the product.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, just the growth in ingredient lists between like two thousand and five and two thousand and fifteen or two thousand and twenty. You know, five ingredients to like twenty, like this is what grows.
Yeah, but they were cheapening the product. And to cheapen the product, you have to add all the other stuff.
To stabilize it, to multipliers.
And you also want to make sure the shelf life is as long as it could possibly be.
This has to go like survive a nuclear attack in four hundred years in a bunker.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, um, I, I won't buy, no, it doesn't matter. I won't buy Oreos because I sat with the, when the lady was running Kraft, which is now Mongolies or.
Right, Mondelet, right.
She came into Cargill, brought us all together, I mean, thousands of people. And she basically said, I want it to taste the same. I want it to feel the same.
Right.
It has to be, um, ten to twenty percent less.
Right.
Or you can't be our supplier, which was a stupid thing to say to the world's biggest ingredient company.
Right.
Because like the wheat people came back and said, but we can't do it. But Cargill's walked away.
Right.
If they could.
Yeah.
Well, that's how you get stuff that's called to what it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Fiberglass. It's cheaper, but.
Oh, there's a lot of paper pulp in food.
Yeah.
What's, what's also interesting is Cargill's feed business. The feed business is more regulated than human food, when animals are fed. And they're really specializing it because that's how you can also protect the food chain. So they're specializing now in salmon feed, chicken, salmon a ton, high protein farm raised salmon.
That's good to know, that they're getting.
Yeah, I had, um, but they take that very seriously because from an ingredient standpoint, as you're touching the product and feeding the product, um, it's healthier, better. There's a crap in it and chicken or the fish is better. You don't have to treat it later. It's all in the feed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, which.
Makes them whole.
But it's a big science leap, you know, in a whole different.
But that's good for farmers because you're giving them a lot, like, they're getting the benefit of that hopefully.
Yeah. I mean, they did it, they've done it with beef and they're getting, they're, Cargill's, I don't know if they ever will getting out of beef because it's so difficult. And we, you know, in all the teams, we said, it's going away anyhow.
Yeah.
And then Cargill does all the pea protein for all the impossible foods and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
So. But all the stuff you're, the packaging was. And I taught my kids toll manufacturing, which is basically what, you know, you clean the filling line and then what do you want to fill?
Yep.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you guys don't want empty hours.
Running.
In a well-maintained facility. I was always surprised wine does it all the time.
They just switch it out.
All the time. In California. And they even do, uh, the smaller wateries are doing, um, like these bottling vans come and bottle.
That's so cool.
But it, because it's all about the cleanup.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all this useless information, yeah. Completely useless. I mean, nobody wants to stand next to me at a party because I'll say.
Just talking about burgers and coffee.
Do you know how to make that Triscuit? I know how to make a Triscuit.
I love Triscuits.
Triscuits are actually pretty good. What was her name? She was terrible. I still remember her coming. Because people at Cargill took real pride in delivering. And they're like, to do that, we have to add texturizers. We were well ahead. We were at the five and six ingredient place, but our customers weren't.
Mm-hmm.
Because the latest product manager had to do something, right? Yeah. Stop, you know. We gotta find you a really good brand job.
Yeah, I know. I was just, that's Chobani. I'll have to go again tonight. I just listened to.
I think so.
But I don't know. I can't tell if it's promoted or not. It's fine. I hope you guys know anybody who's there because a lot of the Ocean Spray.
Yep.
We want to extend it another fifteen.
I think you, if we're all here, shall we go for another fifteen?
Have you had your word back?
Not a word back. And I know one person is at, uh, the Yarmouth Town, Town Meeting, Town Hall. Selectmen, selectmen meeting, right? So, oh, yep. She's supposed to be here, so. Another fifteen?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry that this isn't for you.
Is this where we?
And nothing from Alan, which is a real surprise.
I hope everything's okay.
No.
We need new members of the planning board. How, is this one of our recruits?
Is there a signing?
We have a, we have an answer coming downstream here from.
Are we recruiting?
Yes.
We, um, um, the conservation agent did a P, uh, public service announcement encouraging people to join for the Conservation Commission. So I thought it would be a good idea for the planning board to, uh, go on channel eighteen. I haven't done that yet, so.
We gotta, we gotta come up with the right message here.
Yeah, and I didn't know if one of the members would like to volunteer to do that. I think it would be much more impassioned coming from an actual board member than staff.
We just have to figure out the word.
Yeah. No, we can, um.
You can escape your children on Tuesday nights for.
Hmm, we gotta figure.
Dinnertime and bath time.
You can miss hockey games if you want to.
I think if we probably sat down for twenty minutes, there, like, we could get two minutes.
Yeah.
That could be really good.
Oh, I think so. I, I agree.
We just have to go through all of our bad ideas first and then we'll get the good ones.
Yes.
I can put together an outline if you'd like and for your review and then, um, move that forward. I do think it's important to get the word out that we do need volunteers.
We need two alternates. We need two.
We're supposed to be seven, right?
I believe so, yes. So right now, we're six and we can have alternates, but I, but at least, um, a minimum, we should have seven.
We should have seven and of that, seven are two alternates or no?
Yeah, seven regular members, seven fully appointed.
Seven regular?
So that if you didn't attend, you don't attend, you.
Everything goes on.
Everything goes on. You always have a quorum, so.
Our quorum problems continue. I didn't meet a lady, she's the mother of the head writer on Colbert's show.
Oh, that's cool.
That was cool. That was interesting. And I've got it written, her daughter wrote this book and it was like, oh, how she got this job and. And that was kind of wild. Yeah, there was teaching and then I went, I traveled and it was like, traveling was like suspending my life. And I was like, oh, this is what other people do.
Yeah, where, where were you?
I was in Ireland and the UK. It was great.
With who?
I did, um, two tours. The, um, first tour was fourteen people and I did Northern Ireland. And the second was a garden tour in the UK, which was very fancy, much fancier than I am. It was, it was great. I mean, I went to Chatsworth, which is Pemberley.
Mm-hmm.
They are the best marketers. The Chatsworth Foundation, I mean, they, I have been in every shop and everything. And the way they merchandise was.
Amazing.
My, unbelievable stuff. And I was like, you guys are brilliant. Who's doing this? It was really cool. Because they didn't commercialize it or didn't, they brought it up. It's.
Yes, I was just like very curated.
Very curated.
Stuff you can only get in various, that, yeah, that's cool.
It was next level. And then that garden tour, we went to private gardens and you met the owners and they made you tea and.
They were probably buying, you know, wearing the boot, the garden boots that you would only buy in the shop that were this color.
I was like, they have got this down.
That's cool.
Yeah. So that part, I was like, this is amazing. The Irish trip was just fascinating because it was Northern Ireland and dairy and Belfast. But, you know, I hadn't, I said to, I haven't been out of Cape Cod. I haven't done a trip. My mom died in twenty eighteen and I took care of her for five years, so I can't put a date on like when I died.
Yeah.
So this was like. But I, there's no way I'm checking my luggage ever whenever I travel. Not happening. So I bought a lot of tea towels because they're flat. And then when I wanted to buy something and it didn't fit, the Amazon sweatshirt got left behind because I was nuts.
Mm-hmm.
People are traveling with these enormous.
Huge bags.
And it's like, what's in it?
Right.
It was like, if I can't lift. The other thing was when we were in the UK, and we didn't do this on purpose and announce later, it was Taylor Swift, Three Days at Wembley. So the whole city was.
Happy and.
Happy and wild and little kids. It was cheaper to go because they don't, um, muck up the pricing.
Mm-hmm.
That you cannot resell at a different price.
Mm-hmm.
Wild. Yeah, the whole town was happy.
That's true. Everybody's happy.
But people were sitting nice. Happy and. And happy and family groups.
That's cool.
And kids dressed up. It's like, talk about a brand. Interesting. I did the Taylor effect, I did it, I taught it in the class and I, I said, well, it's just a concert. I showed the economic impact. As to how long they stay. People came for a week to lunch. And they said Edinburgh's never had the lift, da-da-da. And Wales, when she went to Wales. Huge.
So interesting. The whole thing, like in her, when the latest, longest album in the whole world came out.
Yeah.
We were driving home from Hilton Head and so, and it was like another night and I, the day came out, I listened to the whole thing, like probably. I just keep driving and then I read all the reviews and like, just so interesting about. They had, she had her, she had a whole Sirius XM channel at that point when they, when it launched. So there were a lot of testimonials from fans and this and that. It's amazing what that woman means to people and how.
And her pop-ups.
Yes.
It's basically, she's selling literature and poetry perfectly. In a whole different way.
Mm-hmm.
It's fascinating. It will, it will, I think she's smart enough, she'll get out. I think she'll go do something else. I have friends who are going to Germany. A mom, her daughter, her two daughters and her daughter-in-law.
I mean, the whole thing is really interesting.
Oh, from a brand perspective?
Yeah, and how she's evolved and.
Alan just said he never got a link.
What?
Alan just said he doesn't have a link. Can you email him one?
Yep, absolutely.
He checked his spam too.
Her fans feel that she is, like, that was like, they did all these on Sirius, in between every break, they'd have people talking about this means and. So she was speaking to me as I was going through high school and then this and then that. It's just amazing how she's kept it like.
Yeah.
She has to, to keep everybody engaged, but it's just, it's amazing.
I know, it's.
And I wonder, it's just when we think about.
Okay, we've got our other member coming on, online.
Does she really feel this way or is that, it's like, what's the marketing component of it and what's not? It's so interesting.
She really knows her audience and she was so early in social media. She's had, or her team, or both, because I think it has to be.
But she, yeah. But it's just, it's still a machine, like, let's sell that. She sells all like actual albums, like, you can buy them, it's crazy.
Is Alan?
Alan said he didn't get the link. He checked his spam too, so. Still, it's, that was an hour ago. Should have been checking.
I got, I had, when I had to do it, I got on, I logged in early, made sure it was there.
And every time I use one of these things, somebody wanted to have a Skype meeting with me yesterday. I'm like, Skype.
Is that still on?
It's like, is WebEx still?
Or GoToMeeting? WebEx.
We do WebEx. It was GoToMeeting.
Right.
But the town uses, is GoToMeeting, because I have it on here. But it's like Teams, Zoom.
I don't, I, I hate Teams.
I'm not a Teams fan.
Oh, presenting on Teams.
I can't, you can't see yourself, you can't see yourself or anybody else and it's impossible. Like, I'm talking to a deep dark hole. No matter what your settings are, it's not right.
Yeah, the chair, it isn't, but they integrated, they sold it to everybody.
That's what like, it was switched to it because it's so much cheaper. So if you're already using the whole platform, like, why are you going to pay separate for Zoom?
Well, Zoom is so much better, but, um, but I think it lifted Microsoft. I mean, out of nowhere was, they benefited from the pandemic, but Team, I hate Teams. I had to, did I present in Teams? I, I did a business plan and I presented it when I was up in Maine. I couldn't see everybody.
Yes, you can't see anybody, so it's like you're presenting to nobody and you have no idea.
I presented the problem, everything else. Later I said, well, how did it go? Then we hit to two weeks of meetings based on what I presented because they all like panicked. I was like, I couldn't, I couldn't tell.
You can't read the room.
No.
Your wife probably would have stopped and said, it's going to be okay, people.
Well, and I said, you guys could come back to me and have asked.
Yes, exactly.
Clarifying question, because I did a pricing study and I did. I gave them the answer and.
They didn't come back and ask any questions?
No, because I also told them they weren't. But I had it all documented. It's that you're perfectly designed to get the results you're getting.
Yeah.
Which you are a holy method. Of course you don't collaborate because you are designed like this.
Right.
No one's going to go across and they were like.
There's no reason to. It's making you.
That was interesting because also that their expertise, they did twenty-two personal interviews. And the experts in the field are all going to retire in the next five years.
And they have no backbone?
None, and they have.
So their credibility.
They haven't recorded anything. And they're resisting.
Is that the way you do it?
It's a nonprofit. I'm sure that's never happened, you've never seen that before.
We're doing a lot of volunteering, like with Tony Kent, the hockey arena. And he's a whole.
I just sent him, sent him the agenda.
So I'm chairing the capital campaign, chairing building committee. Let's get this going. We're going to spend six days of our week here.
You may have been expecting a separate email with the link, not, I mean, I've been paying attention to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
There he is, okay. There he is.
You see me?
We see you and we hear you. Thank you.
Okay.
So you don't want us to see you?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm just kidding, just teasing. It's been a long night and we haven't done any work yet, so.
I, I apologize.
No need. You have the agenda, I take it?
Yes, yes.
So we are going to reopen, we are a few seconds ahead of schedule here. I don't think anybody will mind if we break the bank by thirty seconds. So we're back in session now. With public hearings, case number PB twenty twenty-four dash eleven continued from the twenty-third of April, the second of May, the seventh of May, the eleventh of June, and the twenty-fifth of June, which is the, uh, with Ro Oliver nominee trust, David Crosby and Stephen Farnsworth trustees, who their agent, attorney Ben Zender, seek a site plan review, special permit for mixed use multifamily and to develop a portion of the property as a self-storage unit pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five. Properties located at four eighty-one Depot Street, map thirty-six parcel B one in the industrial limited IL and residential rural RR zoning districts. Gentlemen, thank you for your patience this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Ben Zender, I'm here with David Crosby on the project. The board may be aware, we've already received zoning board of appeals approval. In fact, you know, one of those approvals was a variance for the conversion of the residential portion, which means that we're not asking you for a, for a special permit for the residential. So this is straight site plan review. We've, it's a, it's a conversion of the, of the residential structure into, into apartment use as well as the construction of a single, single building storage unit. The plan has been vetted by VHB and they've asked for some fairly comprehensive additions and revisions planned over time. John O'Reilly, our engineer, has provided those. So I'm going to leave it there, just answer any questions that you might have if you don't mind.
Christine, I know you have one issue or two.
Yes, Mr. Chair. As the applicant indicated, this has gone through several iterations. The zoning board of appeals did approve three use variances as well as two dimensional variances. And that will be infolded as part of this, um, as part of our record as well. And, um, and as mentioned in previous staff reports, the use for multifamily as well as the commercial were, and the mixed use were permitted by the zoning board of appeals. Therefore, for multifamily and mixed use, even those are special permits. They weren't allowed in the two districts. And because the zoning board of appeals had approved them, therefore the planning board does not need to or cannot issue a special permit. So we do, I, I just wanted to reiterate the history on that. Going through the site plan, this was revised multiple times and we are going with the latest revision that was dated by John, John O'Reilly on June eighteenth. And they had made several iterations as recommended by VHB in terms of the vetting for stormwater management. And two issues, they, they did address the parking relative to the residential and the commercial as well as the traffic patterns. They did note that on the site plan. One issue that we did not notice was just a handicapped designation, which the applicant has agreed to make a location in a designation in the parking, for the commercial parking and loading area. In terms of the landscaping and, um, and in lighting plans, the applicant has agreed to do some shielded, some plantings with spruce and abrevi along the south side and as well as placing a chain link fence around the commercial building with hydrangea and wisteria, I believe. So there is additional landscaping. We have recommended that if there possible to preserve any of the mature trees that are along Depot Street or to the back of the property, because there is existing dense vegetation and several mature trees along the property line. And I think that to minimize any visual impact, particularly where this last piece of property is heading into the residential area, that preserving those trees may be welcome.
We're fine with that.
Great.
And, um, Mr. Chair, that's all I have in terms of the.
So that, so we were, that the parking, that was squared away?
It was. They have ten parking spots as designated and it did meet the Harwich code zoning. And I think just for the handicap designation, and that was an oversight on my part for not highlighting it. And the applicant has agreed to address that as well.
So we're only doing a site plan review then?
Correct.
And so we're going to have to tailor our findings accordingly, correct?
Yes.
So, um, it sounds like we don't need section A and E to be considered, correct? No, only section E. Three twenty-five fifty-five E.
Yeah, as well as three twenty-five fifty-one, only because site plan review is a special permit. So they don't, they both go hand in hand. And in previous site plan reviews, we've done both.
So then for the conditions of approval, then all we need is for the staff report a motion to record the following items on the bottom half of page six. And then the findings of fact on page seven and eight, correct? And then the final conditions of approval. So we need three motions, correct?
Yes.
Three motions.
Right? Okay, so who would like to? Alan, are you in a good place or do you think?
I, I would have to defer to someone who's there.
Okay, all right, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anybody want to panel it?
Uh, to read it in?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
So we have to make a motion first, right?
For, correct, conditions of approval of site plan appro, like, site plan approval, motion for site plan approval. Page six.
Page six.
Bottom half.
Okay, so I move that we accept?
Correct.
The, for the site plan approval, do you want me to start with three twenty-five?
Correct. Yes, please.
Section three twenty-five dash fifty-one special permit.
And I would read all the top matter here for the first one.
First line, top matter.
Case PB.
Case PB.
All the way down to lot area.
Okay, so in the motion PB two, um, case PB two oh two four dash one one, this is a site plan review.
Correct.
Do you need the hearing dates?
Uh, no, just today's hearing.
As of today, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, the, you need the owners?
Applicant, just the whole thing.
Applicant agent, agent is Benjamin E. Zender. Landowners are David M. Crosby and Stephen Farnsworth trustees, Ro Oliver nominee trust. The address is four eighty-one Depot Street, Harwich, Mass. Oh two five four five.
Should be oh two six four five.
Yeah, okay. Oh two six four five amended. Uh, location, four eighty-one Depot Street, map thirty-six parcel B one. This is the zoning district, industrial limited IL zoning district and residential rural RR zoning district. The lot is a split zone lot. Development type is pre-existing non-conforming mixed use project. Lot area is thirty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet. Six thousand nine hundred square feet in the IL district. Twenty-seven nine nine zero square feet in the RR district. Do we need the project description?
Uh, yes, let's do the project description.
Uh, the project description, the applicant seeks a site plan review special permit for a mixed use project. The proposed project is to convert a pre-existing non-conforming two-family home into a multifamily building and a new commercial self-storage building pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw sections three twenty-five dash five five site plan review. The property is located forty-one Depot Street, map thirty-six parcel B one in the industrial IL and the residential RR zoning district. Findings of fact, or we're making a motion?
Uh, for these, this is the motion for findings of fact and these are the facts. So we may as well read ahead with them, all the way down to, uh, the anticipated hours of operation.
Okay, all the way down. The proposed project consists of the demolition of an existing barn, a conversion of an existing pre-existing non, non-conforming two-family home into a multifamily four-unit apartment building with a total of seven bedrooms. One studio apartment, a studio unit is counted as one bedroom per Board of Health, one bedroom apartment, one two-bedroom apartment.
Excuse me, are we, should we be canceling this? Didn't we just?
No, um, this is fine, I'm just, I'm just jumping ahead of the hours of operation, I was going to.
Okay, no, no, I was just saying, um, I thought our special permit issue was, had nothing to do with this.
No.
Residential material here.
No.
Right, so like.
We don't need it.
We don't need that, so I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm going on the fly with this. This is a new, this was a.
What does apply is the proposed project.
Includes, correct.
Includes. Strike that, the proposed project includes one-story steel self-storage unit that is a hundred and fifty-five feet in length by thirty feet in width and nine point six inches in height. Total square footage is approximately four thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. The building is to be placed on a concrete slab with a total of sixty-one storage units. Do we need the unit?
Nope.
It is anticipated, yes?
Yep.
There will be one employee and the hours of operation are Monday to Friday, nine AM to five PM.
Yeah, that's, that's a little, little, I think we may well have asked for in the application, but it's a little more restrictive. I think we would ask for seven AM to seven PM.
Seven AM to seven PM.
Because people need to get into those storage units before and after work.
Right.
I know we had that discussion previously and that's consistent with the other.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay.
Seven AM to seven PM.
Let me amend that. So amended, seven AM to seven PM, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we go where?
Then, uh, so we've already done the, we've already discussed the approval, the variances, the history and the documents.
Yeah.
Although we probably should say that the doc, hearing documents include.
Oh, right here, the general site plan review criteria?
Page three, application hearing documents include, just so we can record that those are on. are on.
Okay. Application and hearing documents include, one, Form A and narrative via email and hard copy. Two, project narrative, planning board site plan review, application and zoning board of appeals, special permits under a variance application prepared by Benjamin E. Zender, dated April 10th, 2024. Three, proposed site plan of land, Ro Oliver nominee trust, David Crosby, 41 Depot Street, Harwich, Mass. by J.M. O'Reilly Associates. A, site plan dated October 3rd, 2023. B, revised, revised site plan dated January 5th, 2024. C, revised site plan dated January 22nd, 2024. D, revised site plan dated March 22nd, 2024. E, revised site plan dated April 11th, 2024. F, revised site plan dated May 24th, 2024. G, revised site plan dated June 18th, 2024.
Yep.
We don't need stormwater?
Uh.
I'm sorry?
Do we need stormwater reported? Because I know we have report here, but wasn't that part of ZBA?
No, that was part of our review. That's part of site plan review.
Yeah, so let's just go with this whole, up to section 13.
Got it. For stormwater management report by J.M. O'Reilly and Associates, dated April 10th, 2024, revised May 24th, 2024. Five, stormwater operation and maintenance manual dated April 10th, 2024. Six, VHB engineering review of site plan for conformance with the Town of Harwich rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and site plan, special permits reviewed dated May 1, 2024, revised June 6, 2024. Seven, construction drawings A1, A4, A6, and A8 from Regency Storage Systems. Eight, four plan drawings from Givani Home Design, pages A2, A3, A4, A5, A6, and A7, dated 9/6/2023. Nine, all file materials from case PB 2023-35. Ten, zoning board of appeals decision, ZBA case 2024-06, date stamped May 8th, 2024 by Harwich Town Clerk. Eleven, planning staff review dated April 23rd, 2024, and July 3rd, 2024. Twelve, better application. Thirteen, application fee.
Okay. Those are the findings of fact.
Findings.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? No discussion? Mr. Peterson, no discussion? All in favor?
All set.
I, oh, I got, excuse me, I have to do a roll call vote. Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Any abstentions? No abstentions? No, we are good to go. So that motion passes unanimously. We need a second motion for the site plan review, correct?
Site plan review special permit?
No, site plan review, right?
Yes.
Which is that conditions for which the motion, for the conditions which are on page six and seven.
So, so we're on page six?
Yes.
And the motion is for site plan review?
Conditions of approval for site plan review.
Review.
That the, that the site plan meets the requirements.
That the site plan meets the requirements of conditions of approval. One, board of appeals or planning board shall not approve any application for a special permit except a special permit for site plan unless it finds that in his judgment all of the following criteria are met. A, the use is developed will not adversely affect.
Wait, wait, wait. That's for site plan, that's for special permit. We're just looking for site plan review, which is E, conditions of approval, right?
We should go through both.
We should go through both?
Christine said both.
Yes.
You sure? Okay.
Just to be on the safe side.
All right.
Because the site plan is part of a special permit.
Okay.
So they're both together.
I'm trying to economize. Pardon my.
So I think proceed, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could make a suggestion, you just, I think a simple motion that the applicant demonstrated compliance with, with the conditions of approval set forth in Section 325-51, special permit is set forth on page six of the planning memorandum, I think just a motion of that effect. I'm not sure you have to reread into the record.
Okay.
It's been our habit.
That's been, that's been the practice.
Well, no, I'm not telling you how to do it. I'm just saying, a lot of times I'm working with, they're moving towards when you have standard conditions and standard language, just incorporating the language by vote.
Right. But we've been, we've had counsel on our board for so many years that this is the practices that's been adopted by it. You know, I realize it must be agonizing to have to listen to it.
We're trying, we're trying.
I'm fine.
But we're doing our best with the, the practices that we've inherited. It's like the 100th monkey syndrome, right?
Well, the words of Shakespeare show often.
I am the current monkey.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, B.
Thank you. Apologize for the interruption.
B, the specific site is in appropriate location for such a used structure or condition. C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation, the proposed use. This includes a provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater abeyments. Conditions of approval related to section 325-55E. Conditions of approval. One, if the site plan meets the requirements of this bylaw and the planning board rules and regulations governing subdivision of land and site plan review is amended, the planning board shall approve it, notwithstanding the foregoing. Such approval may include reasonable conditions to ensure that, A, reasonable measures are implemented to provide for screening of parking areas or other parts of the premises for adjoining premises or from the street, by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices. B, the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian traffic are enhanced. C, surface water from parking areas and driveways will be efficiently and safely disposed by means of a proper drainage system as specified in the board's approval. Two, however, the board cannot deny approval of site plan for use which is allowed by right, not by special permit in the district, but may impose reasonable conditions on the proposed use. The board may not impose conditions on the grant of a special permit, implementation of which would be contrary to any recommendation of this bylaw or required variance from it or any other applicable provision of law.
That's our motion.
This is a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Ready for a vote? Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Third motion?
And then the, yes, conditions of approval, correct?
Yes.
Page nine.
I can motion to accept the recommended conditions of approval being, one, the proposed project shall be in compliance with ZBA case 2024-06, decision and revised site plan stamped with date June 18th, 2024. Two, the planning board decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Three, this special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, either that no appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Four, this special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in general law C40A, section 17, from the grant thereof. If a substantial use therefore has not, not sooner commenced except for a good cause or in the case of permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. Five, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. Six, applicant shall conform to inspection, certification, and as-bill plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Take a vote, roll call. Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Ann Clark, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you all for your time, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that in my desire to expedite the process, I didn't skip over closing the hearing, did I? The hearing was closed?
I don't recall it was.
But I think you can make a, make a motion to.
Yeah, I, I will make a motion that the hearing is now closed, even though we've done all the findings. May I have a second?
Second.
All in fav, Emily Brudy?
Emily Brudy, aye.
Ann Clark?
Aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Thank you all. Alan Peterson.
All right. All right, that hearing is closed, and we are ready to go for that. All right, great. Last item of business this evening is case number PB 2024-17, Davenport Realty Trust through its agent attorney Paul Tardif has applied for a special permit in order to build a two-family residence at 5 Shelley Path, assessors MAP 55, parcel F1-2, in the residential low-density RL zoning district pursuant to the Harwich zoning bylaw, section 325-51N.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm Paul Tardif, I'm an attorney in Yarmouth Port. See you with me is Christian Davenport from the Davenport Companies, Vice President of Operations. The trust is the, currently the potential owner of a property at 5 Shelley Path, which is lot two on a definitive subdivision plan from 2017. And we are seeking a special permit to allow the construction of a two-family residence. This is in the RL zoning district. Lot has 41,265 square feet, 209 feet of frontage on Shelley Path. The zoning district requires 25-foot front setback and 20 on the side and rears, maximum building coverage of 25 percent, and we're not in a special flood zone nor a zone of contribution, which is good. Proposal is to construct the two-family dwelling, with each dwelling having two bedrooms for a total of four bedrooms on, on the site. Units will be connected with a common roof. Each will have, each unit will have 1,092 square feet, full basements, unfinished attic space. Parking spaces are provided for both units. It's going to comply with all the setbacks. Building coverage will be 6 percent, total impervious coverage 10.7 percent. This project is the same style and size of the homes that the Davenport Companies have constructed in many places in Harwich in the past and routinely approved by the board. Under thirty, chapter 325, section 51, the floor requirements have more than 40,000 square feet, floor area more than 800 square feet, common roof and parking, and we do have that in, on this plan, which you have. We've reviewed, well, we also will find there's not going to be any undue nuisance, hazard, congestion with this, the size of the lot is great. It's, it's a good place for this type of application, so I don't think it's going to have any adverse impact on the neighborhood, the town, or the, or the neighbors here. We did look at the staff report. I think the only staff question was the utilities. We do have some plans with us today that show the utilities. That was done after fact. If you want us, we could submit them now, or we can put them as part of a billing permit.
I think we should submit them now and.
Great. Yes. That was our, that was the big question to begin with, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Great.
Thank you.
Here we go.
So we've addressed that anyway, and I, I think based on everything, and I'll obviously allow you to review that, but I think the request for a special permit is warranted. If you have any questions, we're here.
Okay. Let's hear from the town first.
Okay.
Took a little of the wind out of your sails here, which is a good thing. So that's.
The applicant, the case is PB 2024-17. The application is for a two-family dwelling special permit. The public hearing date is July 9th, 2024. The applicant is Paul Tardif, trustee, Davenport Realty Trust, and the landowner is Sam Speakman, LLC. And the landowner's address is 235 Great Western Ave, Great, Great Western Road, Dennis, Massachusetts. The location of the project is 5 Shelley Path, Harwich, Mass., assessors MAP 55, lot F1-2. The zoning district is the residential low-density. The development type is two-family residential unit, and the lot area is 41,267. The project size is 2,184. Each unit will be 1,092 square feet, not including the basement. And the proposed project is to construct the two-family dwelling unit with two bedrooms each, combined with a total of four bedrooms. Two units will be connected by a common roof, and each will have a floor area, again, of 1,092 square feet. Each unit shall have a full basement and an unfinished attic space on the second floor. The applicable laws are in regulations, our mass general law, chapter 40A, section 9, in Harwich zoning sections 325-51, special permit in section 325-51N, two-family dwelling. The project review, for the project review, the public hearing notice was duly advertised in the Cape Cod Chronicle on June 20th, 2024, as well as June 27th, 2024. Copies of the application were sent to various town departments, health, water, fire, conservation, zoning, public works, and police department. There were no comments or concerns raised regarding this project. The applicant, the application documents included Form A, the Form A, planning board form and narrative, the quitclaim deed, owner authorization letter from Sam Speakman dated June 5th, 2024, the first Shelley Realty Trust trustee certification, site plan layout and system design with zoning compliance chart by J.M. Thrasher, civil engineer, 54434, dated 5/25/24. This was part of the definitive subdivision, lotting, plotting plan, Cypress Design, Kevin DeNehy, PLS, dated February 14th, 2017, building in elevation perspectives by Davenport Building Company dated April 3rd, 2020. It should be noted that the design plans weren't necessarily for 5 Shelley Path, but they were for another, a previous project. The site plan includes connection for municipal water and water services, but did not show utilities. As part of the definitive plan in the covenant release, the services for water and for all utilities should have been, should be part of the entire subdivision as conditioned in the planning board decision. So the applicant has provided utility connections for this. May I ask, will this also include utilities for the other lots? Or do we have to follow up with the previous, with the developer?
Yeah, that was a question.
In order for, to get the gas running down the road, you have to put an application in for a house, and since nothing else has been bid on this road, that's why the gas isn't in yet. You can't, you can't just get them to put the gas in until someone puts an application.
Got it.
So once this gas application goes, they'll run the main up the road, and then we tie it.
And they'll branch off at every other?
Correct, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay.
And so for, again, for order of condition of approval, this would be under section 325-51 special permit and sections 325-51N, two-family unit special permit. So again, the subject property is 5 Shelley Path, Harwich, Massachusetts, assessors MAP 55, lot F1-2, in the residential low-density. The proposed site demonstrates compliance with the zoning requirements for a two-family dwelling unit special permit, including the following, the lot size. Each unit will be 1,092 square feet, which exceeds the 800 square foot minimum. The two dwelling units are connected by a common roof or a series of roofs. Each unit has at least two, two off-street parking spaces. If, and Mr. Chair, if you want to go into the recommended motions or recommended conditions, but that's my evaluation at this time.
Okay. Okay. Um, are there any questions from the board first? We've seen this before, I think. Any, uh, questions from the public? Comments from the public? Yes?
Hey dude, um, I'm just, I'm in a butter. My house is the one on the corner.
Okay.
54 Main Street Extension.
Could you, uh, do us a favor because of, uh, we have a new op, setup here, so please give us your name and your street address.
No problem. Uh, my name is Rob Slaney. Um, I live at 54 Main Street Extension. Um, I have the existing house off of Shelley's Path.
Okay.
Um, I, one of my big concerns is that road isn't paved, and if we're doing multifamily homes now, who's going to be maintaining that road? It already washes down into my yard. Um, Speakman, it was a grate, uh, you already put a drain in, but I'm consistently having washout problems, um, and that paving, it's only a 20-foot skirt from, um, coming around the corner of Shelley's Path. So that's my, that's my big thing, is the wear and tear on the road. Um, and that's just kind of my, my major concern.
Okay.
Well, we're buying one lot. We're buying one lot.
Right, one lot.
Uh, Mr. Speakman retains ownership of the, of the road, uh, subject to our right to use it. There's another lot that, another piece that's in part of this.
Right.
Um, as part of our purchase of this, we're going to need to get a permit, which is going to require that...
Runoff.
That gets addressed, so...
So that's a question that will be addressed at the next phase, right, of permitting? I guess, will that be a ZBA issue for, for this, or?
The top's not on the road yet.
Yeah, no, it won't be a ZBA, it will just be a building.
Buildings, okay. So that will be addressed.
Okay.
But, uh, I don't think it's, at this point, in the, in the chain of events. That's not something we do right now.
Okay, that's, yeah.
But if you'll want to, um, follow this, it'll be, you know, obviously, public and...
Yeah, I would like that. I've just sensed, and it's not you guys at all, it's not, and it's not Speakman or anything, since that, I bought this property from my parents, who went through the whole process with that road being put in in the first place, um, and nothing got done for seven years.
Right.
Um, I purchased the home and they came in and they just told me, I was losing my, right of way to my driveway and everything, that got dealt with. Um, but my big thing is nobody's been maintaining the road. I've been plowing it, I've been mowing all the hedges back and I've been doing all the work. So I was just wondering where that comes about, and if that's a later stage with, across that when it comes, um, I'm just concerned with over-usage of, it's not a very big...
Right, and I also think for good neighbors ought to be having these discussions, you know?
Yeah.
Don't necessarily have to get to town hall for that, but you're absolutely right, so...
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming into this evening and pay, and for taking the time to make it to past 8 o'clock for this.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too.
Mr. Chairman, just, before we go, just, I understand, I think you understand also the Davenport Companies are very good neighbors. They have impeccable properties, they maintain them, um, routinely. Um, they're beautiful properties, and now I'm not just talking about Harwich, uh, I'm from Yarmouth, they have multiple properties there. They take good care, they're not, um, going to be like that. So if there's something we can help with, you know, if it's our obligation to do it, or at least we'll talk to someone whose obligation it is and we'll get it done, so...
Does that help you for this evening?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just, that was my big concern, just, I just don't want anything, you know, I don't want it to turn into a crapshoot, if you will. Sorry about the language.
Well, somebody who's living in a family home that goes back for a while, I completely get the concern, so, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Alan, any questions from, no? And I think we can enter... How about the dog? Does the dog have any questions? No? Okay. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'm so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion to close the public hearing, Emily Brody?
Emily Brody, aye.
Anne Clark?
Anne Clark, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. So at this point, we have recommended findings, that I suspect that we will want to have a motion to, for these findings of fact. We are going to then want a motion for, uh, conditions of approval.
Do we have to close the meeting?
No, we closed, we just closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing, okay.
So I didn't make that mistake twice, so... Despite being off balance here tonight.
Okay, so...
So let's go through the, let's have a motion to approve the, the findings of fact laid out in pages three and four.
Uh, do we, all right.
Uh, you know what? At this point in the evening, I don't think we're going to, anybody's going to be served by repeating...
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so, motion to accept?
To accept the recommended findings of fact.
Accept the recommended, um, findings of fact. Um, so I would take it is here?
One, the applicant is...
Okay, we'll go here.
Let's, because we've already read this and now twice.
Got it, got it.
So I just say we go to the recommended findings of fact.
Recommended findings of fact. The applicant trustee, Paul Tardif, Esquire, Davenport Realty Trust. Two, the subject property is 5 Shelley Path, Harwich, Mass, 02645, assessors map 55, lot F1-2, is located the resident, residential low-density RL zoning district. Three, the proposed site plan demonstrates compliance with the zoning requirements for two-family dwelling units special permit, including the following. A, the lot size of 41, 267 square feet meets the 40,000 square foot requirement. B, each unit will be 1,092 square feet, which exceeds the 800 square foot minimum. C, the two dwelling units are connected by a common roof or a series of roofs. D, each unit has at least two off-street parking spaces.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Emily Brody?
Emily Brody, aye.
Anne Clark?
Anne Clark, aye.
Duncan Berry, aye. Harry Muns?
Harry Muns, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Okay. So the motion to accept the, um, findings of fact is, were approved unanimously, so we now have a motion to entertain the, uh, conditions of approval.
Okay, motion to, um, accept the recommended conditions of approval. One, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit revised site plans demonstrating that all utilities and services have been installed as per the planning board's definitive subdivision decision, as specified in the signed agreement covenant documented dated February 2nd, 2017. Two, the planning board decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Three, this special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days elapsed after the filing of the decision, either that no appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such a time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner record and parcel address. Four, this special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in general law C40A section nine from the grant thereof. If a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. Five, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-bill plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of the Town of Harwich.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Emily Brody?
Emily Brody, aye.
Anne Clark?
Anne Clark, aye.